To East Hampton Town Board, we are live, being recorded and streamed.
You have great energy today, Jason. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Town Board Work Session of September 3rd, 2024. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
Present.
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 Present. Now, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have made it through another season, and what I would like to do first is just express our appreciation for town staff as we just wanted to take a moment to extend our heartfelt gratitude to each and every one of our town staff members for your dedication and hard work through the busy summer months. You have been instrumental in keeping our community vibrant and thriving. Whether you've been maintaining our parks, providing essential services, or ensuring public safety, your efforts are truly the backbone of East Hampton. Your dedication through this time and beyond exemplifies the spirit of what makes our town a beautiful, healthy, and an extraordinary place to live, work, and raise a family. Our community and this town board, thank you for all you do. Your work is deeply appreciated and felt by our residents.
Well said.
Thank you. So, we're going to open with public portion today, followed by, we have three topics. We have Jeannie Carosa with bids. We have Michael Jordan from the Nature Preserve Committee presenting a draft management plan for the former field property in Amagansett. And Brian Frank will be presenting a memo he's drafted on the environmental conditions on the Cheryl Triangle. That'll be followed by liaison reports and then resolutions. So, Carol, I don't know if there's a signup sheet for... Is there anyone here that would like to address the board? No? Jason, is there anyone on the line?
No, there's no one on the line.
Okay, so we're going to get right into it. Jeannie, if you want to discuss bids?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Few bids here. First is for the printing of miscellaneous forms. Montauk Printing, Ridgewood Press, Dan Printing are all the apparent low bidders for that. Next is the acceptance of the demolition of 26 Morris Park. Ronald Webb Builder is the apparent low bidder for that, and the amount is $59,697.27. The next bid is the Montauk Playhouse Phase 2 HVAC installation. Boilermatic Welding Industries is the apparent low bidder in the amount of $264,000. Then we have a few notices. First is for the intersection improvements, Stephen Hans Path and Long Lane and Two Holes of Water. Purchase and installation of a new fire pump on marine vessel. And then we're having an RFP for the professional consulting services for continued remedial investigation of the airport class 2 inactive hazardous waste site. Those bids will be available on the 5th, and then a bid for the 12th will be the rebid, and which is a rebid, and it's for the purchase and delivery of jet skis. And that's all.
Okay, so I guess we should let folks know, the Morris Park Lane demolition, that is a property that we had gotten from Suffolk County. We paid, I guess, back taxes for that. That's going to be demolished, and then some lucky family is going to be able to build a home there.
Right.
So, that's in our affordable housing program. And did you want to touch base on Stephen Hans Path?
So, the intersection?
Yeah.
So, the intersection improvements are going out to bid. This is the intersection improvements that we're looking to for public safety, in which we have a designed roundabout in this location of Stephen Hans Path, Long Lane, and the Two Holes of Water is fully engineered to be going out to bid. There will be an onsite meeting of potential contractors upcoming now, too. This process is going to be completed by Memorial Day of this coming year. That adds a lot of buffer in there for any type of weather. I actually wouldn't mind seeing snow, but if we don't, it means this project will actually get done a lot quicker than that, then, too. As we move forward on this, there will be some disturbances in this area also, as we did recently for the drainage projects, in which they'll be doing greater amount of drainage in this location. This also ties well into what has recently just started in the last couple of weeks at the intersection of Route 114 and Stephen Hans Path, which is actually a New York State DOT project, in which they've started the widening of that location also. So, just be aware as you get your kids to school, first day of school today, and others, that there might be some traffic lane slowing down in that way as the construction progresses in the means of public safety.
Right. And when we're ready to go start the construction of the roundabout, we just ask folks to tune into our social media. We'll be putting updates there. And do you just want to address, David, there's some folks that were concerned that it may look a little too suburban, and I know that you've gone to great lengths to make sure that it fits in with the character of our community?
We have, and I thank you for that. Yes, this location, public safety is number one on there, but it's a high priority on that, is continuing the rural nature that we enjoy out here. We are going to be having Belgium block inlays on the truck aprons and also on the split divides. Very, very well used in the area on many of beautiful landscaping. Also, we're going to have dwarf fountain grasses in the middle there, very low maintenance, with a very, with a large local boulder in the middle. So, it's going to be very, the prescription and the design of the landscaping is going to be for beauty, but also low maintenance that can be carried over for year after year to be able to make sure that it looks just as well as it functions.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any other questions for Jeannie?
Nope.
Thanks, Jeannie. Okay, Michael, you're up. Welcome, Michael.
Thank you. Good morning. I think there's supposed to be a... Okay, you've got it. Okay.
No, go ahead.
So, Michael, if you don't mind me just teeing this up one second. Michael Jordan here, he is the co-chair of the Towns Nature Preserve Committee with Richmond May. Andy Gates is also here, one of our town land stewards. And the Nature Preserve Committee has been working on draft management plan for this property for about a year-ish now, then, too. And Michael's here to present to the town board on the draft. Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome. Okay, I assume everyone can see this. But up on the screen right now is a map or a drawing of an aerial map of the property. And this is in the northeast corner of the Amagansett parking lot. It's a two-acre tract. Of that two acres, roughly 1/3 of it, or 30% of it, will actually be allocated at some point to parking, and that would be the part that abuts directly on the parking lot. But it's, that'll be built at some point in the future, who knows when, I don't know. But it's, the rest of it will be an active town park, which would be 1.6 acres. The land has been disturbed. It's been a dairy farm in the past. Right now, it's rather overgrown with a lot of vegetation. And it was owned, most recently, by Herbert Field, who sold, and I believe it was Herbert Field who sold the property to the town. One thing I'd like to note, Tom Field, who is his son, is a member of ACAC. And I know at the last meeting, and Tom Flight was there, I had asked Tom Field if he was interested if the name of the property could be the Field Property. And to me, it's whether it's a town, that's a town board decision, but I just wanted to find out, frankly, if he had an objection, and he would prefer it not be called the Field Property. So, just to get past that, so at this point, it's up to the town board, whatever they would think it should be named. The town acquired the property in April of 2023. It's, as I said, it's going to be actually an active park. It's going to be established as a public use park, and it could be a community meeting space. It's going to have to be cleaned up a bit. The property will be open 365 days a year, from sunrise to sunset. As I mentioned, the town will have a portion of that property reserved for creating additional parking at some future date. There will be an ADA compliance sidewalk from the municipal lot to the preserve, and that will then be extended over to where the restrooms are located at the back of the Amagansett parking lot. There will be a multi-use trail installed on this property. Most likely, it's going to be handicapped accessible, and it will probably be a firm surface such as Crushstone. There could be, at some point, a playground, ADA chess tables. There could be some area which could be a shelter with maybe some, a few picnic tables, whatever, and some benches. There will be some fencing put up. There'll be a low rail split fence. And then where the property abuts on the south end primarily, there will be like a picket fence to give some privacy, and perhaps some plantings along there. There will be a kiosk at the entrance with any rules or regulations for the facility. And there may or may not be, depending on what the town wants, a carry-in and carry-out sign. There will be some benches that will be installed. And as I mentioned, there will be a shade shelter of some sort and some trees planted. It'll be planted with grass, which will have to be maintained and mowed once it's cleaned up. Are there any questions regarding the property?
So, I'll just add one more context to this, is that in 2016, this is, there was a contract deal for this property. It didn't get finally executed until 2023, but part of the contract was that the total property, that 30% of the property was purchased with municipal funds, which is why the parking lot's allowed to be in there. And the rest was CPF for open space and recreational use, as Michael has currently explained also then, too. Multiple speakers at that meeting, including myself, when I was not on the town board, spoke in favor of this for these type, both of these type of uses also then, too. Thank you, Michael.
Mike, I do have one question, sorry, I may. I just noticed, noticing looking through the packet, one thing that is prohibited use for the space is to bring any pets of any kind.
Yes, that's correct.
Could you just talk about why that decision was made?
It's a small property. This is not like some large nature preserve going, with trails going off in the woods. It's small, and since it's going to be basically grass in a park where kids may be wandering around, I don't think we want any excrement from dogs or other pets on the property. It'll present a nuisance to those that are using it.
So, it's the mess associated with the dogs?
Yes.
You did, the committee doesn't feel that a pickup policy of dog excrement would be sufficient? Or I'm just thinking of multiple uses.
I think it'd be better still to even not even go there. My experience is, I've seen it in nature preserves so often that, or any of the town properties, you'll see people put, pick it up, put it in a plastic bag, and it's left there. And to me, particularly if you're getting the large nature preserves, I'd almost prefer that people just take the dog off a path, let it do its business, than leaving some plastic bag that'll be there when I'm long gone. So.
Got you. Thank you.
Tom, has this been discussed at all at the ACAC?
There was a brief presentation, Michael, but not, did we do a full one of this plan? I'm not sure if we did, did we?
I know Rona put it out that this, that there would be this presentation today to the committee, because she'd asked me about it at the post office a week or so ago, and I told her there'd be the presentation at the work session today.
Perhaps we can just walk through the full plan on next Monday's meeting as well with the other committee members?
Yeah, if you want more detail, yeah, sure, certainly.
Yeah, because we should see if ACAC supports the plan.
Yeah, there hasn't really been, let's say, like, the property, the larger property in Amagansett next to the affordable housing, which has been controversial. It's not gotten a lot of questions at ACAC meetings or comments.
I think one or two of the nature preserve committees, we've had neighboring property owners, multiple members of the ACAC membership here, just, you know, as a listening session prior to us developing anything then, too. I think the chairman, the co-chairs did a good job inviting them in to participate in this, in this. And I would agree with what Michael said. This one was fairly well-received. But yes, Tom, please.
It's not a whole lot here to really get, with its use, et cetera, or anyone. I could dream, I could even dream of anyone having something controversial to comment on.
Yeah, no, I'm more, it's more about, do we put a playground in? You know what I mean? Is there a need for that?
My personal view is not at this time, because, and I've said this, and David's heard this, and I think I've mentioned it at the ACAC meetings, that right now, I think Amber Waves has that, has that at hand with their property, where people can, there's like a playground, there's shade trees, and people, you don't even have to buy anything. People can go in there, sit at a picnic table, whatever.
You also have the school, which is very close as well.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
But the recommendation on the nature preserve committee was to act for the allowance to have one here, not necessarily saying that there has, is going to be one.
It's in it, the plan, but it doesn't have to be done at this time.
These are all recommendations, and the committee at that time discussed that at any point, the school system or potentially even the private property owner might not allow or offer those type of offerings anymore, and that could be a location within Central Business District that the township could provide that type of recreational opportunity.
And as far as the path is concerned, how far, what is the loop? Do we know?
It's not much.
It's not going to be very large, obviously, because it's 1.4 acres is what we're talking about.
If it's, if it's 400 yards, yeah, it's not, it's not much.
Is it worth doing as a loop?
It's worth it, worth it to potentially have access for ADA use, because that's what, these are multi-user paths or ADA user paths on there. So, it gives an opportunity for individuals with disabilities to be able to go onto public properties.
I'm just thinking, to walk, to go in a circle, or is it better to do something where you can, a shelter where you had picnic tables, where you could have kids running around and make that handicap accessible? I mean, obviously, it'll be interesting to hear back what the community wants there.
Exactly.
I mean, or would we be doing the, if this were to stay in, is this something that would be recommended to do at the earliest of a multi-use trail, or is that something also we're looking to hold back on until?
Well, so I think, I think there's this two-phase here, is that within the town code, whenever a management plan is actually put together and presented to the town board as a draft, the town has to bring that management plan to the town board within 60 days. So, what we're doing right now is within what the code states is bringing management plans to the town board for discussion like this, to see what the recommendations would be for potential future use of this property. Just because these options are on these properties doesn't mean it's going to happen on these properties, but it has to be discussed based on the code. If it was, in my opinion, I would probably start to, I would do any type of engineering for the parking, the additional parking, and the multi-user trail as one. It's just the economy of scale there, so that you can actually look at the full engineering that might be needed if it's leveling or grading of the lands there, any type of drainage on there. Have an engineer's aspect, look at the property as a whole, and then you could determine once post-engineering information, if you want to install, cost parameters, timing parameters and such. On the edges of the property, it is vegetated with lots of invasives and vines. Part of the discussion was to open that up to the look of the farm fields also there. So, open that up, so individuals that might be wanting to go there and read a book, play with their child, or just relax for a moment, could also look over Open Vista Farm Fields, which was one of the initial purchase reasons for the development rights and the fee title of the neighboring properties.
Which, community members are currently, as you mentioned, Michael, using Amber Waves, but they're also using Amagansett Green for that purpose, too, right? You know, we see lots of kids running around and...
Square.
Right, yeah.
Square.
Square, Amagansett Square. Do board members have any other comments or questions?
Couple of questions. Just on page four at the top paragraph, above recreation, it says the town reserves the right to create two public parking areas within the property. I don't know, I can't see where the second one would be.
At what page?
Page four at the top. So, it starts, the paragraph starts, "The property shall be open to the public. Primary access to the property will be via the Amagansett Municipal Lot." Then the next sentence is, "The town reserves the right to create two public parking areas within the property."
Sure. So, I can answer a little bit more. So, with all CPF properties, there's public access allowed to town properties, in which the management plan is very similar to 81 Ocean Ave, allows for two public parking spots. So, knowing that this is split funded there between municipal and CPF funding, the municipal funding portion of it might be a parking lot, but it doesn't actually necessarily state that there'll be parking to, parking on the property or needed for the property. So, that's the discussion point. So, it's sort of covering all our bases, make sure if someone wanted to go specifically for the part, for the park area, that there might be parking installed there if it's deemed needed at that time. So, it's sort of covering the two bases of the two separate funding lines on there. One for the municipal larger lot, and one potentially parking for the CPF open space lot, too. It's sort of redundant, honestly. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, like two. I just can't see the room for two.
I mean, it might be worth if your ADA spaces specifically, if we don't have any in a good enough location within proximity to this, actually putting in specific ADA spaces adjacent, if that's the goal of the path.
Yeah, I understand that, Tom.
And my only other, thank you, David. My only other question is about the permitted and prohibited uses, and the, under prohibited uses, although it has a caveat for the ability for the site to be used, number eight weddings or similar private events. My concern is that with the proximity to all the restaurants and food establishments, that this can kind of turn into a catering space, and I don't know where you actually would have a wedding on it.
Well, it would only occur if it's authorized by the town board. It is a small property.
It's the Special Events Committee, and the town board has to pass a resolution. But is that just standard language? Because I don't really think this is an appropriate place for a special event venue, or particularly a wedding.
Well, it's already, it's saying it's prohibited or restricted.
But it does allow it. It has an exception in the code. In other words, this would be putting it on the Special Events Committee where...
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't know how that would be if it was us. You know, we do allow it on beaches up to, how many people now? We changed the code. Is it 25?
That's for a wedding ceremony.
Right, so, okay. I think of wedding ceremony here. I can't imagine.
Well, it says weddings or other similar private events, and again, I'm just concerned with the proximity that we'll get, you know, an abundance of applications, and I don't know if this is an appropriate spot for events, special events. That's my question.
I guess that's what the, I'm comfortable, it is standard language. I'm comfortable with the way it's drafted, because it is, it is to the discretion of the committee and the board. Okay, then it could be Little League, you know, wants to have a party there. It could be the fire department.
But it doesn't seem like there's a lot of clearing to have anything.
Although, so the whole, so I agree with you, Katie. I don't think this is a place for weddings. But again, I also agree that the Special Events Committee is probably the best form to do so. Just mean, if the library wants to have a library reading event or something to that effect, or another small community event. So, the whole property here, what is pre-existing cleared, and that's just all scrub, that's all grown, grown in over the last couple, couple of years on there then, too. I think there's a, within, the plan actually shows where all the vegetation is in there. It's a baseline document that the land stewards did. The only woody, woody trees are on, on the primers of the north and west side on there then, too. Some cherries and some other, other ones, but most of, most of it's all been cleared over time and cleared, and then it's sort of just growing back bramble right now, right?
Yes, it's, and Andy Gates could comment if there's any of the trees are worth preserving that are along the western or northern boundary that are existing.
Is the memo there, do we want to just show so that the folks that are tuning in could see some of the images that are in the management plan?
Sure. Let's, let's pull that down if you could, maybe to page 11 and 10. And go through some, that's great. So, maybe, Michael, if you can just set this up for us here?
Okay, here's the present parking lot. This is private property here. The parking for the part which was used out of the town's upper rent home funds would probably be something along. And as you can see, there are a few trees along the perimeter on this, on the west and the north. As we've, as mentioned, there will be a rail fence going around this over here. More likely, a picket fence of some sort to give some privacy. And we'd have a trail going somehow through here. That still has to be planned. I don't know if Andy has any thoughts on this point, how that will go. But a lot of this is going to have to be cleaned out. It's just a lot of brambles, and there are a number of invasives in there that would have to be removed, et cetera. And I don't know what the state of these trees are, how many of them are worth preserving, if any, et cetera. I don't even know at this point what the species are. I've been up to it. I haven't ventured in, because I'm not going with that. I didn't have these kind of, whatever, to go in.
Can you pull that down a couple more, Chelsea, potentially, just other, you can see how the connectivity there goes to the municipal parking lot that we installed in 2021 there. That connectivity actually has ADA access to the new parking lot, which is another portion of this property that we purchased. And ADA parking spots there for the long-term parking, that would be continued through. And in the bottom right here, bottom right, there's, there's material soil that, you know, the former use of the property had, that would have to be removed or graded out also.
What would be nice is that this can be opened up, you know, this should be opened up, where you get a view looking out over the fields, so you have some expanses to look out from.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
No.
So, Tom, if you maybe want to discuss this at the...
Next Monday.
Monday, let me know, and then we can maybe schedule to have this for a public hearing sometime in October. If, or come back for any changes, and maybe we'll get to the public hearing then.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, you're cruising through here. Brian, if you could join us to discuss the environmental conditions on the Cheryl Triangle. And maybe just for context, we had a public hearing a couple of weeks ago on parkland alienation, and the Cheryl Triangle came up as far as being, you know, a nature preserve and a nature habitat. So, we asked our planning department to give us a memo on that. So, if you could take us through that memo, Brian, that would be helpful.
Sure. Good morning, Supervisor Burke Gonzalez, board members. Brian Frank from the Planning Department. As the supervisor indicated, the Cheryl Triangle, as it's often called, or Ryan's Town Park, was the subject of a public hearing on August 15th to consider removing it from the town nature preserve system. The planning department did a joint visit to the property on August 27th with the land acquisition department, and I want to thank Andy Gate, Andy, the other Andy, I'm sorry, Andy Drake, for his time and assistance in putting together some of the background information on the history of the property and his, his time on the property. And there is a baseline documentation report that could be provided digitally to the town board. Land Acquisition has it. Andy was good enough to loan me a hard copy for a little background information. The property was originally authorized for acquisition by the town board in 1971, and it was incorporated into the town nature preserve system in 1993. The property comprises about 2.4 acres in total. It is located in a B residential. It is located in a B residential zoning district. It adjoins neighborhood business zoning to the north. There's some con, commercial industrial land on the, uh, west side of Three Mile Harbor Road. The area is generally characterized as a residential neighborhood, fairly high density, mostly, uh, smaller lots, although there is a, a great deal of variability in the size and shapes of the, uh, properties in the immediate, uh, neighborhood. There are no other nature preserves in the immediate area. There are some additional, uh, town held recreational open space properties, but the nearest nature preserve is located, um, uh, a little over a half mile away to the southeast on, uh, Dominion Court. The property is wedge-shaped, um, it's an inverted triangle. I could bring one up if, if you'd like me to.
Do you have the memo on there? Great, thank you.
Um, so as I was saying, uh, the property is wedge-shaped. It's about, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty feet wide at its widest port, part which is the northernmost portion of the property, uh, tapers to a point in the, the southern portion of the property. The northern two-thirds is, uh, wooded and the planning department would characterize it as a disturbed woodland. Most of the species in there are, uh, non-native and are considered invasive. Species like, uh, Norway maple, uh, Tree of Heaven, um, black locust is semi-native, but still not really native to the northeast. Uh, the only native canopy species that, uh, was observed on August twenty-seventh was, uh, black cherry. And that was a minority in the canopy. Uh, the understory has, um, similar species to the canopy, mostly Norway maple and, uh, Tree of Heaven. Um, there's a lot of Asiatic bittersweet throughout. It's an invasive vine that covers everything from the ground and, uh, up, up through the canopy. Um, no real ground, uh, cover layer to speak of. The planning department would generally characterize this and, and does in its environmental reports to the various land use boards or advisory boards as, as poor quality habitat. There's not a lot of good indicators there of, of high environmental hea, health. Uh, the southern third is a manicured lawn, um, with a combination of native species, um, some of which were, uh, believed to be planted by the Natural Resources Department back in the, uh, early two thousands. And there are ornamental species such as, um, uh, European holly is, is in there. There is an ornamental cherry there, um, and a fair amount of, uh, litter. The property's use for wildlife is also limited by its, uh, proximity, its, its contiguity with two of some of the highest volume, uh, roads, uh, that we have, uh, major collector streets. And, um, that makes it, um, hard for it to be used by terrestrial wildlife species as, uh, refugia. So, if you do have, um, some nice pockets of quality habitat in town where that can be conserved as kind of an island of, of refuge, uh, for our native species, that's, that, that's a great thing to retain where possible. That's not really, uh, present on this property. Um, as the board knows, um, nature preserves are nat managed through chapter one-eighty-two of the town code. And, uh, right now there are, there are eight criteria for, um, inclusion or eligibility in the town nature preserve system. Uh, it doesn't really appear that this property satisfies any of those criteria. Um, and if the property were being considered for nature preserve inclusion now, uh, the planning department would probably, uh, almost certainly give it, uh, a, a low score, a low, low ranking, a, a, a low recommendation. Um, I do want to speak about one of the criteria a little bit, um, because it does involve, uh, endangered species. That's the, the first criteria on the list there. And, um, this property, as well as all of the properties around it, do show up if you run the environmental resource mapper for potential habitat for the northern long-eared bat. And the northern long-eared bat was added to the federal endangered species list in, um, uh, uh, twenty-twenty-two. The, um, and, and the resource mapper is a great tool. It, it's a great screening tool. We, we use it frequently in, in the planning department, but it's not definitive on anything, especially protected species. I've used it on properties where I know that there are sensitive amphibian populations and they may not come up, um, but other things like piping clover as well. So, um, I, I don't want to knock it. It, it's a great tool, but it is not determinative. It is not conclusive. Um, that, that same mapping tool includes the entire neighborhood and, and appears to include the entire north and south fork of the town. Um, I ran the, the mapper on varying lots in the area and it, the bat comes up on all of them. It doesn't matter how small or whether there's any, uh, uh, vegetative cover on the, on the property at all. So, I wanted the board to have that information, but also to be able to put it in the, um, proper, proper context. And that's, uh, a summary of the memo. If any of the members have any questions that I can answer, I'll, I'll certainly do my best.
Thank you, Brian.
No questions from me? Nope. No, it, I mean, it goes back to, I believe in ninety-three, there were a couple of properties put in there and another time in the eighties in which many properties that were looked at as just leftovers were put into nature preserve status. And I think that was unfortunate back then, then, too. You know, not knowing what these properties are going to be and also not going to the standards that are set, set for in the code. I don't disagree with you. I've always thought this property was a little bit more of a mullet, a lot of business in the front and a lot of party in the back.
So. I really wish I used that in the memo.
Yeah, I'll, I'll use it here. I apologize. But, uh, yeah, so I thank you for that, Brian.
Yeah, Brian, um, and even just, uh, particularly, uh, besides what you've noted on the existing conditions of the property as of, uh, last week, um, I looked up Tree of Heaven and that looks like a nasty, uh, invasive. It said that it was quite noxious and.
It is.
And I, I, if you could send me a picture of it, because I want to see if I have any on my property, uh, because I don't live that far from here. Um, but, uh, that was of interest, but also the history of the, the property, how it came to be in the nature preserve system. And as David said, it's clear back then there were, uh, fewer tools for preservation of any open space. So, that was a good, uh, place to put things at the time. Uh, whether they actually met the criteria or not is another story, but particularly for this one, uh, I appreciate your evaluation.
And Tree of Heaven, I believe, is also the, uh, the host plant for the spotted lanternfly.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, we have to be very careful for our agrarian businesses out here from grapes all the way through then, too. Very dangerous and it's been, it's been spotted out here on other host plants in the area.
Yeah, the, the full impact of the spotted lanternfly hasn't been realized out here yet, but it's coming. And part of it is because, um, Tree of Heaven is a weed. It, it's a, it's a weed species. It's been out here for, for a pretty long time, but that is going to provide, uh, the host opportunity for, for this, uh, new pest.
Yeah, that's another good work session topic to identify some of these. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to say than, thanks as well. I think, and to Andy Drake, uh, um, I'm not an expert in, you know, native or invasive species. I know a little bit about plants, but it's really nice to have, you know, the expertise of Brian and, and also Andy Drake, who became a certified arborist to help the town. I think it just, uh, it's really nice for us to have expert advice like this on things that we aren't, um, professionals on. So, thank you.
You're welcome if you require any other information about the property, you know.
So, so as Brian said, so this is a specific action we, um, we're going to have a resolution on for Thursday following the public hearing we had last month, whether or not to, uh, move forward with the, with removing this property from nature preserve status and do the Parkland Alienation. But I, I've gotten some emails to my office and there's some confusion out there about we have to take this step, but we also, there's a separate action on the ballot on November fifth, and that is to, um, to convey this property to Suffolk County. And, um, folks, just, I've just, what I've been writing when people reach out to me is that the purpose of the referendum is for voters to decide if the town should convey the property known as the Sher, should the resolution pass, known as the Cheryl Trang, Triangle to Suffolk County to improve safety and traffic delays at that intersection. It's going to be dependent on the county and the county DPW to decide what makes the most sense when they do that roadway project. Because they'll go, they're going to be reconstructing County Road Forty, which goes from basically Collins, uh, on North Main Street all the way up Three Mile Harbor to, I believe, Copises. And the, the county engineers will be redesigning this intersection or not, right? We've, we've looked at in our, uh, Hamlet studies, we had a roundabout there, but the try, the DPW also, when they were out here, talked about a traffic light or any other option they may consider. So, should this resolution pass on Thursday, the ballot measure, um, on November fifth, it's, if that passes, it's incumbent upon town residents to, to reach out to the county and make their voices heard on what type of roadway improvement makes the most sense for our community. It hasn't been decided what would go there, uh, again, to, to improve public safety and to deal with the traffic delays and the backup and really the bad light of sight when you're trying to come down Springs Fireplace Road and make a left onto North Main Street. And just as someone who uses that road basically every day, um, actually I avoid that intersection at all costs, like most, uh, folks do, uh, coming down from Springs. And I, uh, cut down, I go actually Abraham's Path to, um, Three Mile Harbor, um, which there's a big line of traffic there that starts because of the avoidance, or I hit Jackson, uh, if I, if I had to go that way. It's quite dangerous, um, and, uh, I think doing nothing is actually a, a, a threat to public safety.
Right, which we heard when, when the county came out here in May and had a presentation and eighty or ninety folks showed up where, and the impetus for this was that when, that when folks came and made their voices heard, they wanted to hold off on reconstructing County Road Forty until there were plans and this intersection could be addressed. Because for those of us that live, you know, north of there, live in Springs or, um, in East Hampton, it, it's, it's dangerous, um, so.
I got rear-ended there a year and a half ago.
Did you?
About, about a year ago, yeah. I was stopped for, uh, I was coming down Springs Fireplace. We were looking to make a left. I got stopped for a bus that was in front of, I think, is it Indian Hill there? Uh, I know Millling Terrace, maybe. And someone came and just rear-ended me. Brand-new car.
So, all right, well, Brian, thank you for.
Thank you.
Coming today and for drafting the memo. So, we have wrapped up our topics for today and we are up to liaison reports.
Right, thank you. Um, Amagansett Assistance Advisory Committee, as we mentioned, will be meeting next Monday, the ninth, six-thirty P M. Um, we will, in addition to discussing, uh, the field park, um, or to be named park, um, we will be having the Long Island Clean Energy Hub out to, uh, discuss options for residents to improve the energy efficiency of their properties. Human Services, uh, just a reminder that the senior center will be closed this Friday, the sixth of September. That is because we will actually be, uh, having a, uh, fifty-year celebration of our nutrition program that day at the American Legion and Amagansett. Uh, additionally, we want to just call out that there is at two P M tomorrow, among other activities, an osteoporosis prevention program going on, um, at two P M. And on Thursday at eleven A M, um, additional programs is Nutrition One-O-One Program. Um, trustees, next meeting will be, uh, Monday, the ninth of September at six-thirty P M as well. Sanitation, um, if any, um, volunteers are out there who wish to sign up to help, uh, clean up of the sanitation site on Springs Fireplace Road, please reach out to me directly. East End Fire Commissioners, we have a meeting on the twenty-fourth of September, seven P M, hosted by Springs Fire Department. East Hampton Youth Task Force, so yes, as David mentioned, first day back to school today. Please be wary of the kids on the road, on bikes, getting on buses. Just take your time. I wish all our students a successful and happy year. Uh, and we will be having a meeting with the Youth Task Force, uh, later this month or early October. And then lastly, Arts Council Committee, um, we have a meeting on the twenty-sixth, uh, of this month at six to eight P M at L T V Studios. Cover your assets. This is about, uh, how artists can, uh, work to protect their, uh, intellectual property of their work, um, um, just avoid it being utilized by corporations and others without their permission. That's my liaison report. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
He said the Town Lifeguards report that, that the season ended with, uh, packed beaches this past weekend. Indian Wells Atlantic Avenue parking lots were closed actually on Sunday to the full capacity. I found my little sliver on the beach and it was full with my family. Anyway, so the summer, uh, season, we had about fifty-nine green flag days, seventeen yellow and eleven red flag days. They also had two-hundred-and-twenty-two rescues, uh, and two-hundred-and-one of those were in protected areas, twenty-one outside of protected areas and twenty EMS calls. This is a wreck and break, record-breaking number of rescues this year, two-hundred-and-twenty-two. I want to thank all the town, towns lifeguards and EMS for their efforts. We are all, uh, town lifeguards are also kept, uh, busy enforcing dog regulations, surfers near protected areas, smoking, and also individuals digging deep, deep, uh, life, uh, life-hazarding, threatening, uh, excuse me, um, holes. Be very careful of that because from nineteen-ninety-seven to two thousand and seven, there were thirty-one deaths caused by collapsing sand holes. Uh, as for marine life, the whales returned late this season. They put on a nice show yesterday for me and my family, uh, and they put on nice displays for all the beachgoers also. The town used our drone systems that were extremely helpful in surveillance of marine life in the protected areas. Uh, the town's bay beaches are closed as of yesterday. And the town's ocean, uh, ocean beaches of Indian Wells, Atlantic Avenue, South Addison and Ditch will be open for the next two weekends, Saturday and Sunday then, too. And I'll, uh, we'll put that out on our social medias also then, too. Again, I, I, with, I, I not, I just don't second, I third and I fourth exactly what Tom just mentioned about schools in session. Please slow down a little bit for our children. Let them get to school. Some of them are the first times ever going to school and first time for parents ever dropping off. I remember being that parent one time also. Give us the parents and the children a break and a little extra time as we get there, right, Tom?
Indeed.
Very important then, too. If it all work out, we'll all get there together. I want to let the town board know that at the SYA, the Springs Youth, uh, uh, Building, uh, we actually just recently completed our IA septic upgrade there of that, that building. Uh, again, it shows the town board's, uh, continued efforts to increase water quality through up, uh, upgrading our septic systems on our town buildings. This also then goes in combination of what the Springs School did a couple of years ago with their IA septic upgrades also then, too. I did a ride around with some of the TCOs last week, uh, in Montauk, to look at, uh, some of our new modernization of our, our LPRs, our license plate readers, our paid parking. Uh, I'll have a report to the town board sometime in September about this and the beaches also. I do have to say the TCOs out there, uh, when I was with them, did a very, very good job interacting with the public. They also saw some forged instruments out there then to forge beach parking permits, which I know I've talked to Carol and we'll discuss this with the board as we move forward. I want to alert the, the Montauk, uh, community that the New York State DOT will be, uh, imminently starting in the next days and weeks, uh, one of their portions of a large drainage project, uh, these, this drainage project's going to be going from South Embassy down to South Elder, where they're going to actually be working on the storm inputs into, uh, Fort Pond and trying to, and reducing that flow and closing some of them up then, too. So, there will be some, uh, some inconveniences to the public out there. I've already reached out to the Chamber of Commerce to let their members know. Lastly, uh, last week I had kickoff meetings with engineers and town staff about, uh, the Stevie Hands Path multi-use, uh, field and also the Comfort Station upgrade at, uh, Abraham's Path Recreational Facility. More information to come on that in the future weeks. That's all I have and I thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Kate?
Yes, thank you. First, I'll, uh, just shout out to everyone at the Litter Action Committee is preparing for their, um, fall event. Uh, this will be, um, I, I have a resolution on today that will spell it out. We'll be joining, uh, towns and communities, municipalities across the nation in, um, in having a, um, national and East Hampton Litter Cleanup Day. Uh, the Litter Action Committee, that will be September twenty-first, uh, this year, uh, Saturday. The Litter Action Committee is reaching out to all local, uh, community organization groups, uh, through their memberships, the CACs and, um, neighborhoods, anyone interested in, in signing up to participate in a cleanup that day, uh, both on the town roads, on the beaches, et cetera. And, uh, they'll have some ideas of how to get the word out. They have done a tremendous job in messaging and while we do see improvements in litter, we also still have quite a bit of litter, particularly on our main roads, uh, where we're. uh, where it appears that you're just getting flung out of cars or trucks. Uh, so that is something they'd like to focus on, uh, this fall with that event. I'll be having more details, uh, on other work sessions. The, uh, Ditch Plains Dune Restoration Project, uh, we're working on, uh, producing a set of plans, one, to bring out to the community and two, to further the, uh, proper permits that we need from the Department of State to get that project, um, moving. Um, the zoning code committee updates, the final drafts of the, uh, suggested recommended code changes that we presented to the board and the public numerous times over the year will be presented again to us and the public, um, on, uh, September 10th, next Tuesday at the Montauk, uh, work, uh, session. So please tune into that and please, um, uh, use the public portion or either in person or calling in to voice your opinion of the code changes. Um, we invite all members of the public to participate. Um, finally, the grant, um, that I've talked about for a year that we, almost a year that we received, it's a $600,000 grant. We, uh, won this grant, uh, uh, from New York State, their CFA program, and the name of, we have now received our initial contracts, uh, and worksheets from the, uh, state. The next phase is Sam Klein, um, Planning Department, Natural Resource Department, we are reviewing them and sending back comments and suggestions to the state, which is part of the process. Um, the title of the project is Sustainable Planning in Coastal Communities Risk Reduction, Revitalization and Restoration, and I'll just briefly read some of the project description to refresh everyone on what we're going to use this $600,000, uh, for. And the project description is, uh, building upon our local waterfront revitalization program. The town of East Hampton will develop a proactive plan for the Montauk Business District. And I just want to note that, uh, it's called, the area of study is called the Montauk Business District and not Downtown Montauk, because it incorporates a larger area that goes up to Industrial Road where the fire department is, um, by, by, uh, just east of the downtown area and west, it includes the Benson Preserve. So it's, it's bigger than just downtown Montauk. Um, so the Montauk Business District to achieve sustainable revitalization that supports a year-round resilient community. Planning will include community-supported options for building and zoning code updates, strategies for reducing coastal hazards and climate risk vulnerability, and restoring natural resources to protect vital economic infrastructure and the tourism industry. The project will develop a local zoning and building code framework to improve resiliency and guide project implementation identified in CARP, that's the town's Coastal Assessment Resiliency Plan. The town will update existing local codes that will protect property owners and public waterfront access, revitalize structures and public amenities, and facilitate implementation of projects that support stormwater mitigation and coastal erosion controls through green infrastructure and nature and natural-based technologies. The project will prepare priority recommendations to improve community resilience by protecting and preserving important economic resources such as natural features and the businesses that rely on them, including those located in or adjacent to the designated statewide area of, uh, I'm sorry, scenic area of statewide significance from climate risks associated with sea level rise, erosion and flooding. So this is a significant project that will be, uh, has 26 tasks, uh, as it is now, this is still in draft and will include a tremendous amount of community outreach, um, throughout the entire process. So that's basically, um, the grant, there's a ton of details and just, I know, uh, what is important to the Montauk Chamber of Commerce and the, the local business owners there, it will have an economic analysis of the actions and changes we will propose versus no action. And I know, I, I want to particularly shout that out because it was very important to the Montauk Chamber and the associated businesses that that was included in the study and I'm confirming that it is.
Okay, so you had said the contracts came in and now you're, bless you.
We're sending back recommendations, any comments, uh, and any changes that we see.
And that's just done internally?
Yes.
And then Wendy, think about when you'd be ready to schedule this for a town board work session so that when we launch?
Will do.
Ian?
Yeah, the Parsons Blacksmith Shop, um, will be open on Saturday, uh, September 7th from 10:00 AM to at least 1:00 PM. Uh, I'd recommend anybody who's not been there to, to come check it out, it's a wonderful historic building. Um, there are two very skilled blacksmiths who volunteer their time, James Demartis and Mitch Yates, I believe Mitch Yates will be there this Saturday, who also knows a lot about the history and the original moving of that building, uh, so come check that out. And then the other thing I want to talk about is the last Spring CAC meeting, I believe I've mentioned this before, two of the issues that come up almost every CAC meeting I've been to are litter. So thank you Kate for, for your work on that and the litter committee, I know that they're excited about anything we can do to improve that situation. And the other is road safety generally, um, and there's a real desire to, you know, add some bike lanes or road safety measures specifically in particular area of Springs. Um, I told them and I'll say here that I think that we should look at this holistically. I think that, you know, road safety is an issue throughout town, I hear about it from other Hamlets as well, um, and we might want to start, uh, a, a study, and I realize this might be a big project of, of how to move people safely on roads to get from one area to the other, whether, rather than just take a, a small stretch of one road and, and maybe another. So I just want to mention it again to the board for consideration. Again, I realize that that's a big project to, to look at right of ways and, and where are the most important access places? We've seen big improvement on Springs Fireplace since the, the county project happened. I think Three Mile Harbor will show improvement when that project goes through, um, though it only goes to Copises. And so we have these sort of segments, of course, those are county projects, we don't have full control. And I just think that, that I mean, again, I hear it every, every CAC meeting, I would like to sort of analyze what, if anything, we can do. And I, and I also want to say that, as I said to them, I recognize that there are others who are worried about any sort of intensification or, you know, more stark-looking roadways which might be involved by adding bike lanes or, or anything else. But I just, again, want to bring it up as something that I'm going to be looking into going forward and, and for other board members who have heard similar concern for their Hamlets, maybe there's a, a comprehensive way we could look at this for. And I know from my time with the planning board that there's a lot of, you know, bike lane easements on even not roadways, um, you know, where people have during subdivisions left, uh, uh, access and there's potential connectivity there. So, um, that's all I have for my liaison report.
Great, thank you Ian. Uh, I just wanted to share the, uh, town PD's statistics for Labor Day weekend, from Friday at 6:00 AM to Monday at 6:00 AM, there were 281 events, including 31 medical aided cases, four motor vehicle accidents, 21 residential noise complaints and five commercial noise complaints, which resulted in two, uh, decibel level violations, uh, summonses issued. There were five arrests made, including, including two DWIs. The Great Bonnet Foot Race was held on, uh, in Springs on Monday morning and there were no issues there. So, uh, the Public Safety, which is, uh, Meet Committee, which is an internal committee, uh, has been during the season, meeting every week. Uh, now we're going to, uh, go to, uh, twice a month because, uh, it was necessary during the busy summer season, but now we can, I think it'll be manageable if we do it twice a month. Um, last Thursday, Chief Sarlo attended a press conference convened by District Attorney Ray Tierney that detailed five separate drug and gun operations. One was here in East Hampton, which has been covered, um, in the local newspapers. And later that day, the chief and I were talking and, uh, you know, he stressed the critical importance of the East End Drug Task Force and the invaluable resources that are provided by Mr. Tierney in his office. So this morning, our office sent a letter to Mr. Tierney expressing our gratitude for his efforts. The DA's support of our local law enforcement agency and the coordination with other agencies should reassure our residents that decisive action is being taken against the drug trade here. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, we were supposed to have an East Hampton Sag Harbor CAC meeting last night because we meet the first Monday of the month, that was, uh, moved to next Monday, September 9th, 6:00 PM. That, uh, conflicts with the trustees who will be meeting in this room, so what our CAC likes to do, if the weather is nice, we meet outside at the picnic tables and if it's not, uh, we'll meet via Zoom. So if anybody wants to attend in the public, please contact my office because we'll be making, you know, a game day decision on whether it's in person or via Zoom and then we could get the link out to them. And that's all I've got. So we have some resolutions we need to do this morning.
First Resolution 2024-1093, uh, as mentioned earlier, this is for the 50th anniversary of the Senior Nutrition Program, be it resolved, the town board approves the purchase of catering and entertainment not to exceed a total cost of $6,080.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-1094 is a payout upon resignation, Danielle Pizzo, uh, where she resigned her position, uh, in the principal office system in the Highway Department effective August 16th, 2024, for a gross total payout of $938.14.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
1095 is a payout upon resignation from, um, Marissa Vasquez Rosante, uh, she resigned her full-time position as a Babe Management Specialist, one in the Department of Aqua Culture, effective June 5th, 2024. And our, uh, Mrs. Vasquez is, uh, to request a payment in the amount of, uh, $816.23 to be paid back as reimbursement to the town of East Hampton.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
1096 is a payout upon resignation from Mindy Snyder, who resigned her full-time position in environmental technician, the Department of Land Acquisition, effective July 5th, 2024, uh, whereas the finance office will contact her Snyder, request a payment in the amount of $515.59 for reimbursement to the town.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
1097 is a septa donation of a memorial bench, memorial bench for a gift from Regina Scully. Regina Scully would like to donate a memorial bench as a gift to the town of East Hampton in dedication of Dominic Kulik, uh, to replace the Indian Wells Beach. Now therefore let it be resolved of the town board hereby gratefully accept so donation by Regina Scully to the town of East Hampton.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I have Resolution 1098, um, and this is for approval of special event, September 2024. Uh, this is for Surf Lodge, their Gene Co fundraiser at 183 Edgemere Street, uh, Montauk, New York, retroactive, uh, two and including Saturday, 9:1, 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. A setup is on, was on 8:27, takedown is, uh, today, 9:3.
Second.
All in favor.
Can I call for discussion for a moment?
Sure.
I just want to clarify for folks, um, and for my board member, fellow board members that when it says retroactive, it's because we, we did not have a meeting in that timeframe to be able to, uh, approve these in advance. So I wanted to clear up why it's retroactive. That's all.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1099 is approval of various special events for September, uh, resolved that the following special event permits are hereby approved with the conditions agreed upon by the reviewing committee. First is Long House Reserve, this is the Philippe Petit Garden Stroll at Long House Reserve, 133, uh, Hans Creek Road, East Hampton, retroactive two and including Sunday, 9:1, 2024, 2 to 6:00 PM. Next is a walk on water, Walk on Water Surf Academy, Ditch Plains Beach, Friday 9:06 and Saturday 9:07, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Next is, uh, Montauk Friends of Erin, the Montauk Seafood Festival, Montauk Green, uh, Saturday 9:07 and Sunday 9:08 from 12:00 noon to 5:00 PM. Next is, uh, Virgin de El Sistre, Grupo Virgin de El Sistna Parade, and this one, uh, begins at 385 Abraham's Path, following Route 27 to Saint Teresa's Church at 67 South Essex Street, Montauk, Friday 9:13 to Saturday 9:14, takes place from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM.
Do you want to do the rest of them?
Oh, you want me to do them all?
Oh, why not?
Oh, yeah, I'll do the rest of them, I'm sorry. And next is the, uh, same group, the, uh, Grupo de El Sistna Walk, starting at Saint Teresa's of, uh, Saint Teresa's Church, 67 South Essex Streets, Montauk. Um, this follows South Elmwood Avenue and Route 27 and will end back at the church. This is Sunday, 9:15, 12 to 1:00 PM. Next is the Grupo de El Sestra, Sestna, outdoor mass and traditional religious event with dances and local singers. This is also at Saint Teresa's, um, and this is Sunday, 9:15 from 12 to 6:00 PM. Next is God's Love We Deliver, God's Love We Deliver Ride to Montauk. The route starts in Bridgehampton through East Hampton and it ends at Montauk County Park, Third House at 1929 Montauk Highway in Montauk. This takes place on Saturday, 9:14, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And, uh, then next is Brian Caribbean for the East Hampton Historical Farm Museum, Peter Matheson Foundation Reading and Discussion. This is at the East Hampton Historical Farm Museum, 131 North Main Street, East Hampton, Sunday, uh, 9:15 from 4 to 6:00 PM. Again, the Historical Farm Museum, Bennett Family Reunion, this will take place at the Farm Museum again on Sunday, 9:22 from 5 to 8:00 PM. Next is Chris Fun Power Event, the Mighty Man Triathlon, Triathlon Bike Swim Run, starts at Lions Field and the parking area on South Erie Avenue through various roads, finishing at Lions Field, uh, Soccer Field on Sunday, 9:22, 6:50 AM to 3:00 PM. And lastly, uh, East Hampton Historical Farm Museum again for their annual baseball game. This takes place at Terry King Bowlfield, Abraham's Path Recreational Facility, Sunday, October 20th, 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You've got some busy weekends in Montauk coming up.
Yes, we do, September isn't quite the end of the season.
No.
Um, uh, the next resolution I have is Resolution 1100, and this is to declare September 21st, 2024, East Hampton Litter Cleanup Day. Whereas established in 2017, National and World Cleanup Day is celebrated on the third Saturday in September and brings together millions of volunteers across our nation and worldwide to clean up and care for their communities and is the largest single cleanup, uh, single day cleanup event, whereas the town of East Hampton takes great pride in its beauty and vibrancy and supports a clean, safe environment now and in the future. And whereas Litter Action Committee is the organizing partner of litter cleanups across the town with supporting organizations, neighborhoods and community groups, therefore now be it resolved that the Ta, Town of East Hampton Town Board declares Saturday, Sept-21st, 2024 as East Hampton Litter Cleanup Day. Be it further resolved, the town board encourages all members of our community to participate by helping to pick up litter, joining and organize litter cleanup and supporting efforts to protect our land, water and air.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Resolution 1101 is a payout upon termination and, uh, this, uh, time records for this employee indicates that they have accrued vacation time balance of seven hours plus 20, point 20 compensatory hours and minus 11 16 hours in overuse of personal hours, therefore be it resolved, the final payout be, uh, 30, the $327.17.
Actually, we're requesting a payment.
We're requesting a payment, sorry about that, uh, in the amount of, uh, $327.17.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, 1102 is pay, payout upon resignation for Jer, Jeremy Samuelson. Uh, Jeremy Samuelson has resigned his full-time position as the Town Planning Director, effective August 23rd, 2024, and audited time records indicate that he has an accrued vacation time balance of point 50 hours and accrued sick time balance of 94, uh, point 81 hours. Resolve that the Finance Department be authorized to cut a check through payroll from the appropriate budget account, uh, for a gross total of $5,432.76.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1103, this is to amend Resolution 2024-489, Water Main Extension for Cantwell Court. Um, there were some adjustments to the, the payment terms and schedule for a total cost of $124,339.21 with a potential of 10% adjustment beyond that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Resolution 2024-1104, I'd like to withdraw.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-1105 is a payout, payout upon retirement for Jesse Devaney. Jesse Devaney has retired from her full-time position of police officer with the East Hampton Town Police Department, effective August 23rd, 2024, and audited time records indicate that she has accrued vacation time, accrued personal time and accrued sick time for a gross total, uh, payout of $19,440.96.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
1106 is to authorize application to DEC Zero Emission Vehicle Rebate Program. The DEC has released the 2024 Municipal Zero Emission Vehicle, Clean Vehicle Rebates Program to encourage and enable ZEV adoption by municipalities for their Rebates Program to encourage and enable Z E V adoption by municipalities for their fleet use. The town has purchased four electric vehicles after September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two that meet the eligibility criteria, so this authorizes the Grants Division to submit an application for this program.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Eleven oh seven is for the J Cap Grant. The town board authorized the Justice Department to submit an application to the New York Unified Court System for financial assistance up to thirty thousand dollars. As part of the agreement, any unused portion of the financial assistance would have to be returned to the New York Unified Court System and this authorizes a check to be issued payable to the Commissioner of Taxation and Finance in the amount of two thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody have anything else they'd like to bring up today?
Nope, I do not.
Okay, so do I have a resolution for exec session?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for personnel, contracts and real estate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.